Do I?
This is a 17, 15 minute.
I'd like to call the order, the February meeting of the Lafayette's.
They're different every year.
Lafayette-Haoming Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk conduct a roll call vote, please? Clinker?
Here.
Snyder?
Present.
Reynolds?
Present.
Wies? Eric Brown?
Here.
Ellersmeyer? Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Four in present. Okay. We need to get an approval of the January minutes.
I'm moved.
Okay, and.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from anybody in the council concerning this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of the city offices on file and the city clerk's office?
Maintenance monthly December, renewed apartment monthly December, and waterworks department monthly December.
And you can see these online, or you can come to the clerk's office to see them also. Okay, ordinance for second reading. We have ordinance 2025-01.
An ordinance amended chapter 13.05 on unsafe buildings.
Mr. Clinker?
We hear ordinance 2025-01 on second reading. Second.
Okay.
We are here for second reading of an amendment to our unsafe building ordinance to address abandoned properties. As we know, abandoned properties are problems for our neighborhoods, impact the neighborhoods, decreases our available housing stock. Some of the changes that we have made is we've expanded the criteria for identifying vacant and abandoned structures. Factors include boarded up entrances, broken windows, terminated utilities, accumulated debris, and other indicators of abandonment. This broader definition of abandonment will allow quicker intervention and prevents further deterioration of structures.
It's okay.
There's also specific maintenance responsibilities of owners of abandoned structures. They include securing the property against unlawful entry, maintaining landscaping, removing debris, and ensuring structural soundness. The updated ordinance does also provide a tiered fine schedule for abandoned properties that escalates every 90 days if the owner of the abandoned property does not do anything to correct its violations. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Are there any questions from the public concerning this ordinance?
Perry Barbie, 3700 Rudbud Avenue. Is these for all the city wide areas? And if we have a list of them, who do we give that list to?
So, we do, we are maintaining, this is citywide. See Click Fix would be a good way to report if you're aware of any abandoned properties in your neighborhood. We do want those to be reported, and doing it through our website and See Click Fix would be the best way to do it.
And is these confidential?
They are not confidential, but I don't believe that we have a published list anywhere.
I mean, so your name or whoever names come out, they would, someone would go back to that person?
Yes, yes. The person who owns the property is who's receiving notification regarding this. Now, of course, they're abandoned, so we don't always know where those people are.
And they would, and they would know it would be.
He wants to know if he's going to remain confidential.
Yes, that's what.
Oh, if you're going to remain, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. If you report a property, will it remain confidential?
Yes.
Any business that the city conducts is public record. So if somebody were to do a public record request, we would have to provide the information, but that's not anything that typically is requested, and we would do everything we can to provide the required information with minimizing any personal information.
Because that's where a lot of times people come to me and they say, well, I don't want my name to get out. I don't want any backlash. Would that be? And I said, I don't think. And they, and people wasn't satisfied with think.
And that's certainly information that people can present to us in varieties of ways. See Click Fix is not confidential because we do have to have a verified email address with it, but if we got a note in the mail and said, I think there's an abandoned property at this address, we are going to take a look at that regardless of if it's signed or not. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, the clerk will have a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-01. Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, next ordinance for first reading. Ordinance 2025-02 was tabled last month and will still be tabled until April 25th.
April, yeah, 25th, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go on to the next one. Ordinance 2025-04.
An ordinance to amend zoning ordinance of Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to GB.
Mr. Reynolds?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2025-04.
Second. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Thank you. Good evening. Kevin Riley with RTS Law, representing the petitioner. As mentioned, we are looking to rezone this site from I-3 to GB. Site consists of three lots, approximately one acre total size of the three lots. Two of the lots are undeveloped. The third lot contains a building that used to house Burkhardt advertising offices, is no longer, but is no longer occupying as a tenant. Properties are located off Navco Drive immediately north of McCarty Lane. Really, the purpose of the rezone is we've received no interest, or the property owners really have received no interest from I-3 buyers or tenants. We do think that GB is more appropriate for this particular location. There is a good deal of GB to the south, also to the east, and, or, excuse me, to the west, and then some to the north as well. We have filed a commitment with this request. The prohibited uses on that commitment were arrived at through communication with the city. So, we did receive a positive vote in favor at area plan last month, and we request your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions from the council on this rezoning?
I just might add, the staff comments was basically about the comprehensive plan. And you all remember, a couple of years ago, we didn't want to cross the way that was I, that used to be an auto auction or something, and we made it a GB. And so we went out there and looked at this, and the owner possibly had a tenant, was going to put in a wrecker, a salvage yard wrecker, and we definitely did not want that. And with an I, they could have done that. And so, with, working with them, and we talked to the mayor, and we talked to other people about the commitments that we needed to put on there, and this satisfied us, I believe. So, we were, Steve and I was both for it.
Do we have any idea what they're going to do with this property?
Yeah, there's, there is an import-export business that they've had some discussions with. It's a car import-export. My understanding is most of these are pre-sold cars. They come in, they're unpacked, they're cleaned up, and then the ultimate buyer, they're either delivered to them or they come and get them. Now, we don't have that lease signed yet because we're waiting to see what happens tonight, but that is the last discussion we've had.
Quick question. Navco, one time it's open, now it's closed. Would there be any change in that, or are you still planning on keeping it a, like a cul-de-sac now and keeping it closed?
To my knowledge, there's no plan change. I don't know that that's within our power to do anyways.
That's private. I don't, I don't think so.
I just want to make sure that that's not changing. Seems okay the way it is now.
There's a private-owned right-of-way through there that's not going to change.
Got you. Very good.
Thank you, sir. Mr.? This, it says that the staff continued to recommend denial. Was that after you got the clarification?
No, this was before we got all of the information out. This was, the staff report was put out before he.
Okay.
Yeah. It was, well, we already had filed the commitment. Is that your question? Was the commitment with the prohibited uses on file?
Well, yeah, I guess the additional, I mean, these were all the commitments that were disallowed.
Yes. Correct. And that was on file before the staff gave their report because we have to file that commitment as part of the petition to rezone.
Right.
So, staff did have those.
And they still denied it?
They did. And, and as Mr. Reynolds says, based on the fact that their plan showed that this was I-3, they mentioned some concerns about this infringing on I-3 in the area, but I mean, I know Walbash has got, I don't know how many acres around there. We're not, a one-acre site isn't going to infringe on what Walbash has going on there.
On the corner, there was a GB on there. Wasn't there RT race cars or something? And now it's a neater place.
Right, right. To the east is the low-cost.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Which works with the city and the greater Lafayette almost.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-04? Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, next ordinance. Ordinance 2025-05.
An ordinance of the City of Lafayette implementing the life and safety, life safety and fire protection reporting.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move that we here and approve ordinance 2025-05 on first reading.
Second. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Alkire?
Brian Alkire, Lafayette Fire Chief. Before using ordinance to implement a web-based fire reporting system for our Fire Prevention Division, it is also being utilized in West Lafayette City currently. Currently, we, the inspectors go out and they get, they ask the contractors that do the sprinkler or fire alarm inspection, will give that to the owners, and when they do their inspection, the owners have to provide that to the inspector to review. This would just allow to use a third-party web-based system where the contractor will actually upload the documents, and the inspectors can then on a daily basis, or however frequently they want to look and get that information. It's real-time. So, currently, we're doing inspections on a periodic basis of one year or three-year. So it could be that there's some systems that go a very long period of time that have some deficiencies that the inspector doesn't catch until they make their rounds, whereas this being uploaded would help to prevent that, so the inspectors can get out there and work with the owners to get their systems back in compliance. I do have Assistant Chief Todd Budd, who runs the division, and also Assistant Chief, or Deputy Chief from West Lafayette here as well for any questions or support.
Are there any questions from the council concerning this ordinance?
Just a quick question. So, this will obviously give you more horsepower out in the field and free up quite a considerable amount of time. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
According to a good analogy from the West Lafayette Fire Department, this adds an inspector at no cost to the city. This program does not cost the city or the fire department anything to participate in. The third-party web-based does charge a fee for the contractor to upload their files or their reports to that.
Didn't we just have an incident at a restaurant that if this would have been in place, we might have caught it because they'd done some.
It could have, it could have, yes.
Okay, which they were done, and then it got, never got checked, and then they had a fire.
There was a deficiency in the kitchen hood.
Yes. Yeah, it just happened just recently, last couple, three minutes. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance?
I would add that we're going to, oh, I'm sorry. The plan is that we would use the same company that West Lafayette's using, I believe Purdue and West Lafayette, or Walbash Township's also express interest. So, it won't be like we're using different companies and causing confusion amongst who's got to upload to what company, so.
Hello. My name's Tyler Beach, 625 North 12th Street, Lafayette, Indiana. And I would agree that this technology would be good, this web-based portal for sharing quick images. And I also feel that it would benefit the 911 directed, if you call an operator from 911, or you text them, that we would have the same technology to send them photographs or photographic evidence that would, as you would say, stop things in the act, or, you know, greatly reduce the chances of the negative outcome from the situation. I know that we don't have that now, and if we're establishing it within, possibly branching out to the 911 operators as well, 911 operators as well.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Any other public comment concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, would the clerk have a roll call vote on this ordinance, please? Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, the next ordinance is ordinance 2025-06.
An ordinance amending chapter 6.07, garbage and waste.
Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2025-06.
Second.
Okay.
Good evening. Dan Crowell Street Sanitation. You have in front of you the amended garbage and waste ordinance. The changes that have been made are the, the things that we've been doing for quite a while now. So we want to just make sure we get them in the ordinance and get everything straight. So it really helps our violation inspectors too. So, I'd like to thank our legal department for all the help they've done in getting this through, and we've sat with about three or four meetings with them, but we think it's good. And if anyone has any question, I brought my general foreman for sanitation with me, Quentin Smith. He'd be happy to answer any questions, but if you have any.
You've got to fight your way out.
See if we can do it.
I just got one.
Yes, sir.
And this just happened to me because after I read all this, I emptied our shredder baskets at home. Well, if I just, I have them in a bag, so if I just dump all that loose shredded in there and it gets wet, is it going to stick to the inside of the container?
You put it in a container?
Well, my understanding is that we're not supposed to.
You don't want a bag.
Trash bag in it.
You can either use the paper bags, or you can put it at the curb, because our big leaf vax will come by and.
What are you shredding, Jerry?
Just, you know, documents. Documents, just shred, you know.
Oh, documents. I thought you were talking about brush.
Put it in a biodegradable bag.
Okay. That's what I was.
I thought you were talking about brush.
No, no. So now, so we want to make sure that us older generation understand that, so it's going to be kind of.
You can just put that loosely, just put that loosely in your toter.
You could just put it loosely in your toter.
Yeah, your recycling toter.
That's what I was saying, because it's wet stuff, it's all going to stick to the inside.
Inside of it.
Inside of it.
How's it going to get wet if the lid's closed? I mean, if the wind's open or something?
Yeah, that's what, you know.
Yeah.
Well, then if you just be on the safe side, put it in biodegradable.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, you could use like the leaf bags. Yeah, that'd be perfect.
All right. That sounds great.
Solve your problem.
Yeah, I just, I just was curious, because after I read this, I'm thinking, and I don't want to dump all this loose stuff. How much stuff are you shredding? A lot.
I have a question about the recycling. When we worked with the Mayor's Youth Council, I know the rules for recycling has changed quite a bit.
Yes.
And, and is there going to be anything out to the public to let them know what you can and cannot? I know some of my neighbors always bag up the recycling.
Yeah.
If they bag up the recycling, it just goes into the regular trash, correct?
They'll take it at the transfer and push it right over to the trash.
So you're not supposed to bag it, there's not supposed to be any food on it, but it's changed a lot over the years.
Yeah, it used to be you could just throw anything in.
Yeah, it used to be, if you didn't know, you put it in the recycling, but that's not true anymore.
No, they basically just take plastic, glass, and paper anymore, but it has to be clean.
So are we going to do any kind of advertising to the public, letting them know of?
Well, that's actually through the Tippecanoe County Solid Waste District. We all put money into that, and they put out continual updates. And I know they put out updates recently about the color of glass and what you can do, and they continually.
They will continue to do that.
We all pitch in money, so it's uniform across the county.
Yeah, because I have the flyer they sent out on our little bulletin board in the kitchen.
They're probably about due for another one.
Another update on that?
We'd be better off then, in my case, is, can we change containers? Maybe go to the bigger container for trash and the smaller one for recycle?
Well.
Now, I think we're still running, we talked, I think we're still running into a problem.
Right.
All right, I just have a question. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Are the plastics that you can put in there have decreased substantially too? Is that not right?
Yeah, I think so. I'd have to have.
It has.
Quentin on that one.
And China quit buying them. I mean, there is almost no market for recycling.
Actually, the United States needs to come up with more stuff to, factories to make, use recycling stuff and make stuff, so. But we're actually working with Fiber Global right now with our new location, and they're right next door. We take all of our cardboard too.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, it's worked out really.
We take it for free and then turn it into a product, so we don't pay. Because there's no market for cardboard really anymore either.
Actually, the product they makes, pretty good product, so, yeah.
I think, we spoke on the phone, oh, go ahead. The red solo cups and styrofoam are those probably the two biggest mistakes in recycling that people put in there.
I have to ask Quentin on that one.
What would you say?
Come on up, don't be shy.
You definitely can't put styrofoam in.
Right.
We've never been able to.
But I've seen some in their places, so I'm just, just wondering what.
Those are two of the very common, and then clamshell plastic as well.
Okay.
Because that's another very common one. Ones and twos are all they currently take at the transfer station here in town.
So even the plastic ones, the plastic clamshells you get at a restaurant, the black ones, those aren't?
Those are not recyclable here in town.
Has to be clear or?
Yeah, clear, ones and twos.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that on.
Okay, are there any questions from the council?
Nope.
Any questions from the public on this ordinance?
Coach is making fun of me. Quit it.
Susan Schechter, 1001 Ferry. If, this is the, the ordinance that was in Dave Bangert's writing today, is that right? Yes. Okay. Thank you. This, this will help my neighborhood immensely if it is enforced. And, and I understand, or, it seems that many components of this ordinance were already in place, like people weren't supposed to leave their cans out by the street 24/7, is that right? So that's nothing new.
Right.
And so, maybe that wasn't enforced?
No, we send hundred thousands of notices a year on people leaving their cans out.
11th between Ferry and Main, right now.
We give them seven days to get them back in or something like that before we find them, but the guys run the routes every week and send notices. I'm not telling you people don't ignore us, but, and we do find people for that too eventually, once it gets to the, through the process to that level where we can find them. But we do that every week. I'm telling you, we send out thousands a year.
Okay, well, I'm still telling you, 11th between Main and at least, it goes up to your house, doesn't it? And there's trash cans along there 24/7. So, and, and, you know, trash out on the street, and it really does make the neighborhood look trashy. But, so, so if this is enforced, it will do a world of good for certain areas where this is a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I noticed about, my name is Tyler, 625 North 12th Street, Lafayette, Indiana. I like collecting flyers and cards, and one of the flyers that I collected at the beginning of last year happened to be the sanitary district and their renovations and new ideas with a simple brochure, three-fold pamphlet, gave the information very clear and simple to follow, especially for someone simple-minded like me, simple men. And I thought it was very good and inspiring. It inspired me well. And then I also found that the electronics being thrown in the trash is also not supposed to be. And then the bags and the recycling, you're not supposed to bag them, and you're supposed to sort them, and it's a common behavior. It's really good. I think that we're bothered people from where I am and where I've been. They're just bothered, so they don't take the time that they would have taken, or their, their children are taking a slow turn to recovery, which does take time. But I did find out that through Vizio Television, there's an e-commerce online. You could write their assistance online through Vizio and ask them about the return. They will pay for shipping. They provide shipping to ship these materials back through and to electronic recycling companies. So there we have a big solution. And I think it had been provided to those people who want peace of mind, well, I'm going to take this time to sit back and do it right, because it's for me a peace of mind, and I need this time. And if somebody invades upon that, then I report it, because what is right is right, and that is right. And if somebody tries to do me wrong so that they might fraud me from it, I do report it. And I think that's, so the online e-commerce is an option for electronics.
We also have some free electronic days in Tippecanoe, if you're a resident of Tippecanoe County through the Solid Waste District also. We have, some of you may have seen the lines at the fairgrounds. We have. The Steel Road on the days that we do.
For many hours.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Todd.
Any other public comment? Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Colleen Delaney, 475 South Street. It's my understanding that the current ordinance still excludes apartment buildings that include more than five residential units, and I want to ask if there are any plans like West Lafayette currently has to require these apartment buildings to recycle, because after losing streets and sanitation down at Third Street, there's no longer an option for those of us that live in these apartment buildings to drop off our recycling within our community.
Do they still have one?
No, we, we need to come up with a solution.
Oh.
But, but I don't think we're going to, we're not, I'm not saying, we're not going to, I want to just try to answer, oh, you don't have to answer, I don't see in the future that we would be forcing those people to recycle. I mean, we don't force residents to recycle at this particular time, so I don't believe we would be forcing those folks to recycle, but we can try to look for a solution to maybe give you another drop-off point. It won't be as convenient if you live downtown, because, but we could possibly look in that, but I don't see us forcing those people to provide recycling.[1619.41] But I don't see us forcing those people to provide recycling.
Yeah, I understand, and I just want to mention about location.
Yep, sure.
Those of us that live in these apartment buildings downtown, a lot of us don't have access to a vehicle. So the Tippecanoe County drop-off sites are not accessible for us. And the only way to safely get to the facility, county facility at Ninth Street, without a car is by bus, which the 23 does serve it. But that's a big obstacle to overcome for disposing of our recycling responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Perry Barbie, 3700 Rudbud Avenue. While we're on the recycling thing, is there a, down the road, and we want to encourage more citizens to recycle? And for me, I recycle 99.9% of everything that comes in my house. Is there a way we can make a, if people don't recycle, a surcharge on the, to encourage? Because say if someone's recycling, he shouldn't, he, we can encourage more people to recycle. And I feel like if we make a surcharge on recycling or trash pickup, we're going to get more recycling then.
I'll answer that, Perry. Thank you very much for your comments. I always appreciate you. But again, I don't, I don't see us doing that for several reasons. One, you're not required, and with the changes that have been made and so much of it not even being accepted anymore. And that could change from week to week, what people do. You could recycle this week, and you didn't recycle next week, maybe you went on vacation. The administration of that would be significantly costly to the city of Lafayette. So as a practical matter, I don't believe that's a direction that we would take. We'll certainly through education, continue to encourage recycling. But, I mean, the reality is, it is more difficult because so few things are taken, and they want them really clean now. Sometimes I wonder my spending more water, rinsing stuff out to make it clean enough to go into recycle, you know, to balance. You know, and that's, and that's true. I mean, so I don't believe that that would be the proper direction for the city to take at this time.
I think that the Americans in general want everything instantaneously and the easiest way possible. And that's an educational thing nationwide. I went to Ireland this fall, and you see absolutely no plastic over there. And that's national. And until, until it becomes national, I don't see it helping, because we're extremely spoiled in this country. And we want everything right now, the way that we want it, in the easiest way possible.
I came up with a small business plan that would generate something about a million dollars in revenue in less than three months. And that was to do with the side of the bottle. It says 10 cents per bottle, and that it is in the high-trafficed areas. We don't even need to be at the college campus to fill that quota. One semi-trailer full, Gaylord's, 3x3x3, full, one, is a million-dollar profit. That's an economy. Well, we can assign that, okay? That, that's from my, my, you know, I'm always alone, I don't know if my math's right, but one semi-trailer full. I share with everyone that I talk to. I'm not shy about this. It's about a million dollars. You can market it in the Ball State, the Ivy Tech campus, and then in these new, she was talking about having her recyclable, you know, recyclable in the apartment complexes. Why not make that an initiative? I'm not saying that it's about the money, I'm just saying it's about a solution. But the biggest solution that I would like to solve is bulk. Where could I find bulk bags of rice, oatmeal, beans? That's what I eat. I sometimes will go get a snack out of the pack, but I notice that's where a lot of the waste is coming from. And a lot of the waste is filling, so when you have to compress it too, there's another thing. So I would just like it, if I could find a place in Lafayette, which I cannot, I can't even find it online, where I could buy a surplus 50-pound bag of oats, 50-pound bag of beans, 50-pound bag of rice, 50-pound bag of seaweed, and then have my meal for, you know, the year.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to, any other public comment? Quite a bit? Okay, we need a roll call vote for ordinance 2025-06. Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance passes seven to zero. Okay, on to, on to resolutions. Resolution 2025-03.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Lafayette and the City of Lafayette Employee Alliances.
Okay, Mr. Snyder?
Madam President, I move that we hear Resolution 2025-03.
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, we're pleased to bring to unite the final contract agreement between the City of Lafayette and the City of Lafayette Employee Alliance. As you know, we've negotiated earlier in the year with the Fraternal Order Police and the Firefighters Union, and this was the last one. And we were able to get that taken care of, so we bring it before you tonight. I want to thank Jackie and Cindy and Amber and Jeremy Deal, myself. We were the negotiating team through these three contracts, and I think by all accounts, it went very well. And we're pleased to have four-year agreements with these employee organizations. The main changes to this was we did clean up several sections, as you're probably familiar with contracts, to make them up to date and remove duplication. We did increase the clothing allowance each year over a four-year period. We increased the shift differential from 20 cents to 60 cents for the second shift, and 35 cents to a dollar for the third shift. We did eliminate a second bank of sick time, but we were able to work that back together where they could still get 12 weeks off if they had a significant FMLA incident. So we believe that's very fair, again, a very fair contract. We're happy to wrap these up, and we'd appreciate your support.
Any questions from the council concerning this resolution? Any questions from the public concerning this resolution? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote on Resolution 2025-03. Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolutions passes seven to zero. Okay, reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. And reports from the mayor.
Yeah. Well, I'm feeling a little self-conscious now. Dan asked me how long it was, and when I told him, he went, "Oh, man." So I may have to try to talk a little faster than I was anticipating, so.
Hold your applause, sir.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need any applause. Let me get to the end, so. Madam President, members of the city council and all the citizens of Lafayette, it's my honor to deliver my State of the City address. The strength of any community is its people, and I feel blessed to be part of such a special community. A community where cooperation and collaboration are valued and respected, where government, faith-based groups, schools, social service organizations, business, and labor join together to solve problems and move our community forward. A community where citizens support the arts, diversity, innovation, neighborhoods, and volunteer for community and civic organizations. I would like to thank the city council, who works diligently to represent their constituents, and our city clerk Cindy Murray, who is one of the most dedicated public servants I've ever known. I'd like to thank the Board of Works, the Redevelopment Commission, our police and fire merit boards, Historic Preservation and Human Relations Commissions, and all of our citizens who serve on numerous other boards to ensure that we have a citizen-driven government. I'm honored to work with an incredible group of department heads who comprise our leadership team. We have a tremendous team with all of our city employees, and I get countless compliments and have example after example of team members going above and beyond to serve our citizens. I want to give glory and thanks to God for his guidance, wisdom, and strength, and for blessing me and our community. I also want to thank my wife. She said she was going to kill me if I brought this up, but I want to thank my wife, Tanya, who is here tonight, and my family for their unwavering support, love, encouragement, and sacrifice. It means everything to me. I'm pleased to report to the council that we continue to be in a strong financial position. Sound financial management, pro-growth strategy, and an unwavering commitment to our tax and ratepayers has resulted in another successful fiscal year. The current rainy day fund is $9,230,586. Our operating accounts have strong cash balances and continue to grow. Our investment strategy is providing excellent results. By creating a favorable business, job creation, and economic environment, we see our edit funds continue to grow. At this time, we have $7,351,138 in unallocated edit reserves. This brings our total reserves to $16,581,724, which is 30% of the general fund and 18% of the overall city budget. We also have $4,260,228 in unallocated CCD funds. And I am going to ad lib a little bit tonight, too. I didn't count that in the reserves, because we'll probably spend some of that this year, not all of it, but we'll probably spend some of that. But we are in very good shape. All of those funds have increased since last year. Our TIF districts continue with steady growth and the ability to fund significant infrastructure and quality-of-life projects. I'm also pleased to report this year, we have again lowered our tax rate from 1.0586 to 1.0461. You may also remember, we lowered the tax rate last year from 1.125 to 1.0566. So over the last three years, we have lowered our tax rate 9.2%. Public safety continues to be our number-one priority, and I'd like to discuss the tremendous strides that we have made with public safety. It's important to remember the journey to help understand the data that I will present. On September 24, 2015, we held a press conference at the Lafayette Police Training Center. We were in the height of the opioid crisis, and we announced strategic initiatives to help address some of the unique challenges we were facing at the time and to move forward into the future. I'd like to recap the steps that we took in 2016 through 2024. We started our Take Home Vehicle Program. The 2016 budget added five new police officers, a dispatcher, and a position for community outreach. In July of 2015, a new state law went into effect regarding abandoned properties. The new tool added to our efforts that began on September 7 of 2006 with the first hearing of the Hearing Authority dealing with unsafe structures. By the end of 2016, we had nine houses on that list. In 2024, we again updated our ordinance, and now, with two members of our in-house legal team, we will take another step forward. I wanted to give you some historical data that the Engineers' Office furnished for me. From 2007 to 2024, 548 structures were inspected for BOKA or unsafe structure violations. Of those, 440 were either resolved by demolition, were brought up to code and passed inspection, and 108 are still being monitored. We also hired an additional housing inspector that year. New preferences went into effect for the Lafayette Housing Authority. We worked with faith ministries and donated property to make the Hartford Hub a reality in the Lincoln neighborhood. The City of Lafayette was a substantial contributor and partner to help create and establish the new YMCA and the North End Community Center. I had several discussions with Pastor Robbie Bradford of River City Church, which led to the development of River City Community Center and the STEAM Academy. We hired a downtown security officer, started a drone unit, created the first ARC. And now, most of you know that we have the new improved ARC in the new Public Safety Building. Chief Galloway informed me that a couple of weeks ago, when we were coordinating the situation involving human trafficking, that there were 70 people in that ARC as that investigation unfolded that day. So the Public Safety Building continues to exceed our expectations. We created the Captain of Special Operations. We deployed flock cameras. We now have 20 of those. We acquired firearms identification equipment and moved into the new state-of-the-art Public Safety Center. We divided the Detective Division, creating a Violent Crimes Unit and a Special Victims Unit. In addition, a Major Crimes Unit with a Prosecutor's Office was formed in February of 2024, which is located in the new Public Safety Center. And this one, I know we do this, but I'm going to go over it, because it's, it's probably, it's hard to imagine everything that's taken place. We've created 12 civilian positions to assist our officers in absorb administrative tasks. We have one criminal analyst to collect and analyze data, gather data from various sources like crime reports, arrest records, police calls, and other relevant databases. Using statistical and analytical methods to identify patterns, trends, and relationships in the criminal activity, create maps and visualizations to illustrate crime hotspots, and compile findings to present them to law enforcement officials, policymakers, and other stakeholders. We have a criminal analyst to investigate social media platforms and other online resources for criminal intelligence to aid in investigations. Coordinate criminal intelligence with the Fusion Center in Indianapolis. Create and present criminal intelligence reports to all divisions. We have one community service officer that is responsible for the LPD Fleet, equipment management, and allocating our physical resources. We have one community service officer assigned to hiring officers, conducting background investigations, and assisting with extracting and analyzing of digital data. We now have four civilian crime scene investigators. We have one homeless and community outreach liaison, one resource navigator and community advocate, and one victim advocate specialist, who are all housed in the new Public Safety Center, working hand-in-hand with our police department. We also have one community engagement manager, who creates newsletters, monthly reports, updates, podcasts, social media, and organizes community events. We began the use of Axon AI, the report-writing software, announced the first Crisis Response K9, which has been assigned to an officer and is in training. And we hired 24 officers in 2024, which is a record number for the police department. So at this time, if you, it should have been provided in your packet, there's some graphs that I put in there that I'd like to take just a moment to go over with you, and then you can look at those at your, at your leisure. The first graph would be this one right here. That should be, again, in your packet. This is the compilation of UCR crimes that we're required to report to the FBI, going from calendar year 2002 up through calendar year 2024. As you can see, '23 and '24 stayed at historically low total number of UCR reports in our community. If you go clear back to the year 2022, there was 3,400 of those reports, and in 2024, there was 1,957 of those. If you look at some of the highest totals, they were up in the 3,800s. Again, that is a tremendous drop in the number of those crimes. And I give the, the credit to the men and women of the Lafayette Police Department, who each and every day go out and risk their lives for everyone in this, in this community, and they're doing a tremendous job. I want to thank the council for working with us on the new Public Safety Building. Again, it exceeding expectations and allowing us to do things that otherwise we might not be able to do. The next one is just a graph of the 2002 to 2024, so you can kind of see it in a graph. And then the third one is one that deals specifically with firearms. And I'd like to bring, and someday when we have more time, bring your attention. If you look at 2019, we started really, really tracking these things. And you could see they go up and down. But look at, if you look at the different categories and you look at 2024, you see a substantial drop. But if you look at the bar line that goes all the way up to 58.1%, we've steadily, with the new building and the new equipment, increased significantly the number of people that are getting arrested for every time. And this can be somebody that shoots at somebody, somebody that shoots, hurts somebody, somebody just shoots in the air. Anytime a firearm is used, the police department and their unit take it very, very seriously. And as you can see, it is, it is starting to pay dividends. And so, again, you can look at those at your leisure. We have some additional ones with one of our new criminal analysts that's on staff, who is, came to us from Penn State, and now working on their PhD at Purdue. And she's coming up with even more data for us that we'll share with you throughout the, out the year, that I think you'll find very helpful and very informative. I'd now like to talk about the Fire Department. Again, wonderful. They continue to have an ISO rating of two, which is a tremendous accomplishment and a tremendous testament to the Fire Department. That puts them in a very small percentage of the top of all fire departments in the United States. The rating is from one to 10. One is the best, and two is, especially for a community our size, is just phenomenal. So congratulations to the entire Fire Department for continuing that wonderful ISO rating. Under leadership and strategic planning, in 2024, the Fire Department experienced a leadership transition with the promotion of a new deputy chief, marking a fresh chapter in departmental operations. A comprehensive gap analysis was conducted by Emergency Services Consulting International, providing valuable insights to enhance departmental performance. Key focus areas include improved internal and external communication, update to apparatus and replacement schedules, development of facility improvement plans, leveraging GIS and data analytics for operational efficiency, and strategic staffing adjustments and goal setting. Under operational excellence, the Fire Department has been diligently updating its standard operating procedures to align with industry's best practices. Infrastructure and equipment upgrades, significant improvements were made across our facilities, including new flooring and a concrete apron at Station 7, new gear racking at Station 3, new HVAC at Station 8, a new generator at Station 7. Equipment updates include a new fire engine, Engine 6, and its fire inspector vehicle, a stacked water rescue trailer consolidating and modernizing water rescue capabilities. And future preparedness, this is one we probably didn't think we would ever be looking at doing, but recognizing extended lead times for new fire apparatus, taking anywhere from 36 to 48 months to get a fire truck now, or more. The department has proactively ordered a Quint for 2027, an engine and a tanker in partnership with Fairfield Township for 2028. So they're helping with the tanker, and we're getting the engine. So. So, didn't think we would be doing that, but I want to give a shout out to our controller, Jeremy Deal, and Fire Chief Brian Alkire, and Deputy Chief Jamison Blacker for working on this, and quite frankly, for managing our money over the years that allow us to do things like this and make projections three and four years out, where a lot of places probably don't have the ability to do this, and that doesn't just happen. So, I want to thank everybody for the effort in that area. Twenty twenty-five initiatives, the department will continue executing projects initiating in two thousand and twenty-four, focusing on upgrading equipment to combat electric vehicle and lithium-ion battery fires, modernizing high-rise firefighting tools, expanding trading programs to emphasize leadership development, officer training, and specialized topics like elevator rescues and continued infrastructure upgrades. Commitment to excellence, these advancements reflect the department's unwavering dedication to protecting our community and preparing for the challenges of tomorrow. So, again, thank you to the men and women of the Lafayette Fire Department, who are also out there every day, risking their lives, doing a variety of tasks to keep all of us safe. We will continue our progressive approach to infrastructure and development with the following projects. Park East Boulevard from McCarty to Hagerty is under construction. Development of two new wellfields, we're in the process of exploration. Completed two new solar fields, and now we have a total of four solar fields for the city of Lafayette, so we're very proud of that. Completion of the We Are Water Tower, four point two million dollars worth of upgrades to the Glick Wellfield System, which is currently under construction, and we are installing two new wellfields at Glick for redundancy. Improvements to Veterans Memorial Parkway between US fifty-two and State Road Thirty-eight. It's all completed, except for installing traffic signals in the streetlights, and they should be here in the spring. They are on back order. The Public Works Campus is completed and operational. It was about a twenty-one point five million dollar project, and the two new electric sanitation recycling trucks will be going out soon. I think I'm going out this week to meet with students in arts from Jefferson High School, who's going to help design the sides of the truck. So, they've got a first draft they want me to take a look at. We're investing nearly forty-five million dollars in service area eleven A and eleven B for growth opportunities. That will open up about a thousand acres very quickly and about fifty-two hundred acres over time. So, as we prepare for now and into the future, that is a very, very large project for us. We're beginning the final project of the CSO Long-Term Control Plan, which is a rapid treatment facility. That's about a fifty million dollar project. And again, I want to reiterate, as I had a couple of times, hats off to Brad Tally and Jeremy Deal for managing our funds. We were able to do that without having to come to you and asking you to increase sewer rates. So, very pleased that we were able to do that. The John Purdue Block is under construction downtown. That's a fifty-five million dollar project. The final phase of streetscape went out for downtown, went out for bid in January. The Third and Fourth Street two-way conversion is completed. Snowy Owl Affordable Senior Housing, which this council gave a tax abatement for, is under construction. The Jeffersonian Affordable Senior Housing will have Lafayette Housing Authority vouchers in that project, and it is under construction. In two thousand and twenty-four, the city started helping fund Brush with Kindness, a program started by Habitat, where they go into seniors and other people's homes and fix things that folks can't afford to fix and might even make them lose their home. And so, they help provide the labor, the volunteer labor, to do that, and the city's contributing a hundred thousand dollars to help, you know, purchase a grab bar, a new shower head, or, you know, things that we might all take for granted a little bit. We're going to help fund, we've funded it last year, and we're going to help fund it again this year. It's been a very successful program. Ryder Partners Development of South Eighth Street now has three completed homes. John Tebel has three homes under construction in the old rail corridor adjacent to Fourth Street, and the Anvil Twenty-Six Housing Project at the corner of South Street, South and Twenty-Sixth Street will break ground in the spring. I talked to Joe just the other night a little bit about that project, and he said we should be on schedule when the weather cooperates. In Parks and Recreation, Phase Two of McCall is finishing up, which includes fourteen additional new pickleball courts, and the original twelve courts were completely rebuilt. There's a new trail, a basketball court, and improvements around the baseball fields. As you remember, Phase One expanded the parking lot, built the new restrooms, and created the very, very popular new McCall Dog Park. So, that park gets a lot of use and will get even more. The Zoo, the commissary at the zoo is complete. We completed upgrades to playgrounds and other amenities at Arlington and Munger Parks. The Primate Exhibit at the zoo is about forty percent designed. We hope to start construction in the fall. The new playground at Colombian Park was completed and opened in June of two thousand and twenty-four. That is a fantastic hit also. You can't hardly find a place to get on there some days. We are working to install new equipment at the Hedgewood Park and then the Woodfield Park. The Woodfield is kind of a unique one. Again, I'm ad-libbing here a little quick. That was a neighborhood park where they were having trouble taking care of it. We needed another park in the south end of Lafayette, so we work with them, and we're going to take over that park and put new equipment in it, and some neat amenities, and build some raised pedestrian crossings, and then it becomes a public park for anybody in the community to use. So, I think it's going to be a really neat addition out there as we continue to look to the south. I joke with people, and I get requests for new parks from lots of people out there, but they live way outside the city limits, so I have to explain to them that we build parks inside the city limits. So, Loeb Stadium continues to exceed our expectations, and we have renewed our contract with the Aviators baseball team. We are fortunate to live in a thriving, growing community filled with opportunities from small businesses and entrepreneurs to large industries that continue to invest in our citizens and our region. However, we must remain vigilant in competing for jobs and investments in today's global economy. I'm pleased to report that companies continue to choose Lafayette for expansion and investment. Two thousand and twenty-four was another banner year, with over one point one billion in investments announced for new facilities and equipment. This includes a forty-three million dollar investment at Tate and Lyle to increase production and enhance competitiveness, a sixty-four million dollar investment at SIA creating one hundred and ten new jobs, five point three million warehouse expansion by local company LH Industrial Supplies, and Caterpillar's largest investment to date of seven hundred and twenty-five million. Additionally, Sustania, a joint venture between companies from Japan and Brazil, will produce sustainable plant-based biomeg, and there's the full name for you there in parentheses, at the new four hundred million dollar facility in collaboration with Premier, creating nearly two hundred jobs on the south side of Lafayette. And that's a cool project. We've talked about it. That biomeg made out of the corn will replace a fossil fuel-based material, chemical that goes into plastics, that goes into your clothes, your shoes, plastic bottles, all kinds of things. And this this biomeg made out of corn will replace the need for that fossil fuel, so it's also very environmentally friendly. So, it's wonderful to have that. Choose Lafayette, I was at a meeting with them the other day. They started with fifty-five potential locations globally and kept narrowing it down, narrowing it down. We've met with them, I can't even tell you how many times, and at the end of the day, Lafayette was chosen out of a global search, so we're very pleased to bring them here. Other notable projects include Toyota Tusho, a supplier to SIA, the Hagerty Point Warehouse and Distribution Center, Rag Magna Wire, which is expanding to meet the growing demand for battery and electric vehicle market, and Houston Electric did an expansion. GE Aerospace made investments in the production capacity and have partnered with the Greater Lafayette Career Academy to graduate the first class of apprentices, earning an FAA power plant license. Combined, these efforts have resulted in over five hundred and fifty good-paying jobs over the past two years. To attract more companies and facilitate further expansion, we are proactively developing our workforce and ensuring we have shovel-ready industrial sites available. We are invested in our utility and transportation infrastructure and collaborating with developers who share our vision. One such initiative is the development of the Steel Site, a nearly three hundred acre location across from SIA, near State Road Thirty-eight and I sixty-five, positioning us for continued industrial growth. Lafayette stands as the northern hub of Indiana's emerging hard-tech corridor, which will profoundly shape our future. We are deeply grateful to our partners at Greater Lafayette Commerce, West Lafayette, Tipigino County, Ivy Tech, the Purdue Research Foundation, and Purdue University. Our cross-sector collaboration has made these and many other projects possible, setting us apart from many other communities. Before I do my conclusion, I just do want to mention, Dave Hunky put out some cards with updates on the bicentennial. As you know, this is our bicentennial year, and we've got lots and lots of really cool activities. We've got the schools engaged in doing public service hours, poem contests, essay contests, things with our businesses, beer, Lafayette beer, candle, just all kinds of fun stuff. So, please take a look at the card. I want to give a sincere thanks to Dave Hunky, who has been spearheading this effort. Literally, he's been working on it for two years to get us to the point that we are today. So, a special thanks to Dave and his team for all their work in making this a wonderful bicentennial year that we can all be very proud of. In conclusion, it's clear, yeah, Dan, it's the conclusion. Is he still? I wanted to glance real quick, make sure he truly was still here.
Just woke him up.
Yeah. So, in conclusion, it is clear that our city is on a promising path toward a brighter future. The collective efforts of our community members, local leaders, and organizations have fostered a spirit of innovation, collaboration, that drives meaningful progress. We have witnessed tangible improvements in areas such as infrastructure, public safety, quality of life, and economic development. Programs aimed at enhancing sustainability, fostering inclusion, and supporting mental health have further underscored our commitment to creating a thriving and equitable environment for all. These achievements are not just milestones, but stepping stones for what lies ahead. They represent the power of a shared vision and determination, reminding us of what is possible when we work together towards common goals. As we look to the future, let us continue to build on the momentum by staying engaged, nurturing partnerships, embracing new opportunities, so we can ensure our city remains a place of progress, opportunity, and inspiration for generations to come. Together, we are not just moving forward, we are shaping a legacy of hope and success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and your commitment to this community. And because of that, and all the hard-working employees we have, Lafayette is a great place to live. Thank you so much.
Amen.
Okay. Let's move on. Miscellaneous and new business. Reports of council.
I just have one.
Okay.
Members of the St. Joe subdivision contacted the mayor about the, an update to the chicken and hens ordinance, and so I have agreed to meet with them to hear their concerns. And so, we will be meeting, I'll be meeting with that subdivision and their residents this Friday. So, I don't know what will come of it, but I offered to meet with them and hear their concerns, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I think with the price of eggs going up, I think that's probably what's precipitating this.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. If you'd like to comment, you are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address, and be respectful and courteous to everyone here.
Hello. Hi. I'm Eric Sampton. So, I live on four seven five South Street, a couple of blocks from here. I'm pretty stoked about a lot of the development lately downtown and in West Lafayette. I work at Purdue, though, and so a big perk is that I can commute either by foot or by bike, and with all the development, the commute's actually gotten way worse. Like, obviously, I'm optimistic it's going to be better soon, but there's a few things I'm hopeful could be done maybe now. So, like by the John Purdue Block, so where South Street and Second meet, the the traffic signal for pedestrians is out, and I don't see why that has to be the case. I understand there's some issue, they had to redo the light there, but now there's no pedestrian signal. And so, like, when I ride my bike, I'll often bike on the sidewalk over South Street, and it's just quite unsafe there, because I can't, you know, I'm going against the one-way traffic on the sidewalk. It's like, I can't tell if they have a green or not, so I can't tell if it's safe for me to go, and like, if it's turning to a red, and then I'm going to get swiped by someone making a right turn. So, I just think, it seems to me like that light should be functional one way or another. But, yeah, and then I was also, you know, part of the, I like what's happened with Third and Fourth Street, like, as a cycling commuter, right, that it's all two-way. But again, part of this is out of Lafayette's hands, because it's in West Lafayette, but the commute's way worse the other side of the river. You know, the bike path has been closed there for the construction over there at the Rambler or whatever. And so, you know, I'm often having to ride on the sidewalk if I want to be safe, and in part because, you know, cars honk at me if I ride in the road, even though it's my right, it's legal for me to do so. So, I was hoping after the Third and Fourth Street thing, I had seen some flyers saying more sharrows would go up, more share the road signs, and there are a few on Third and Fourth Street now, but it seems like more could be added, maybe on South Street or Columbia Street as well, because a lot of cyclists have to take those roads now that the bike path on the other side in West Lafayette is closed. So, that's all.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Take those into consideration, take a look at it for you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Perry Barbie, thirty-seven Redbud Avenue. I just have one little thing, it's not a big deal. We were celebrating the two-hundredth anniversary of our fine city, and I was wondering, are we having a a online store where people can purchase items, like the city flags and stuff like that, before they can show their pride to the community? Or was the?
Is it going to be on the bicentennial two hundred site? Yeah, there is, there's a website. It's bicentennial two hundred.
But, you know, but like the beer and the candles, you'll need to go to the candle stores that are actually making, making those. But we'll list all of those, but yeah, but we're not going to, we're not going to bring it to City Hall and then us try to sell stuff. You have to go to the stores to buy it.
Okay, you're not going to have an online store?
No.
No.
Because we have to collect sales tax from people and all kinds of things like that, and we're not set up, it's better, easier for the store. But you can get a city flag from Cindy, if you want a city flag, Cindy gets your city flag.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to thank the mayor for his great job, and everyone's doing a great job, and let's just keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Hello, Tyler Beach, sixty-five North Twelfth Street, Lafayette, Indiana, four seven nine zero four. I would like to take a moment to reflect on Martin Luther King Jr. for the Black History Month and my respects to him and his speeches. I am, I surveyed the people, and I found that most of our young people don't just sit and listen to him, and sometimes I find myself falling asleep to listening to him. I find myself in the most stressful situations, listening to him, and then also listening to whom he has spoken for. As you had just said, Martin Luther King is an inspiration, who isn't, though?
One of the issues that I've found is, I think it's called Iment Hall, is a software in statistical and demographic analysis. They gather information through the cookie software, trusts that are within, like NextGen. NextGen wasn't in here in two thousand and fourteen, and then suddenly, NextGen owns cellular devices, they've made trusts, they've built this homicidal malicious contract with their users, which is the cheapest phone, so a lot of people are using it. They don't know that they're signing contracts that says that they're going to be authorized to be malice. I deal with malice all the time from people. It's just rude behavior, and then they find protection and authorization or even order to do it. One time, the worst one was at Crafted Stories, with arrest without probable cause, but but in the moment of fraud, the police officer went with a gang of students and arrested me, and then trying to turn this in. But that was in Delaware County. That was a different statistics analytical software. And I also find that they may be influencing the reports, people not reporting crime because they feel like they're cookies telling them not to. I just heard six gunshots go off. They were silenced. One of them was silenced with a pop bottle. But do I report it or not? And then often, and you know, you get that, that idea not to report it, and it shouldn't be that idea. I feel like the artificial intelligence and devices that we agree to use, it's a selection, not an election. They're selected and they're changing the life that I live in with the people I deal with. That's, that's just something for Public Works and Safety maybe tomorrow. One of the ideas Mr. Mayor Rozorski brought up was common goals, that we want to work together on common goals in this community. And the common goal is our current lease is set by a common competency. Leasing agreements are set by a common competency. The lease I signed had a conflict in it. And I brought it up to everybody. Lafayette Housing Authority, personal lawyer, probably ran it by my parents. And I'm running it by you, General Inspector. And it says that to dispose of your things, for me, the term dispose means I will do for your things as I would do for myself. Dispose means it would be the second of my own or dispute. But then it says in the same contract, I will throw your things to the side. And I don't think that, if I may have an extension of time, just two minutes?
Just thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, with that, the common, you know, I feel like a lot of laws are being broken. And I don't know who to address. Who would I address about those leasing laws violations and the tenancy law violations? And I think everybody should have the opportunity to get a free fire extinguisher, especially the families with newborn children. And then the fire extinguisher websites say keep out of reach of children. I don't think that should be our approach. I think from reading most of the time in the papers, it says a child died in a fire or four children died in a fire. I think we should train our children how to use those appropriately and then also provide them for the families with new children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Blinker?